Welcome, everyone. Give everybody a chance to come on in and get seated. We want to reconvene our council meeting. We have a special presentation this evening to Mr. Donald F. Fracassi. Before I read the resolution, I just want to say something personally. I want to thank you, Mr. Fracassi, for your over 50 years of service. You have truly been a mentor and a teacher to me, and I'm sure you will continue to be that. You truly are a walking history, and I appreciate all your years of service and dedication and commitment to the city. Thank you. Joint Resolution in Recognition of Donald F. Fracassi. Whereas Donald F. Fracassi's parents moved to Southfield in 1947, he married Karen Fair, a Southfield High School graduate, and together they raised six children in Southfield. And whereas Mr. Fracassi graduated from Cranbrook School in Bloomfield Hills, took night school classes at Lawrence Technological University, and attended the University of Detroit until 1957, when he opened his own business at the age of 21. And whereas, his Southfield political career spans over 50 years. He was first elected to the City Council in 1967 as one of the youngest ever, elected council president and acting mayor in 1969 through 1972, elected mayor 1973 to 2001, returned to City Council in 2003 as acting mayor in 2015, and again as a councilman until 2019. And whereas, Donald Fracassi led the city of Southfield during its largest period of growth, 1967 to 2001. During these 38 years in which he served Southfield, he became one of Michigan's longest-serving mayors, and played a major role in Southfield becoming one of the strongest economic communities in the state of Michigan. Southfield was also noted during this period as one of the nation's strongest and the most diverse communities, and received the designation of an All-American City in 1979. And whereas, Mr. Fracassi's tireless enthusiasm to consistently improve the quality of life for the residents of Southfield and Oakland County is still evident today. Through his almost 30 years of service as Southfield's mayor, and over 15 years of service as councilman, he successfully pioneered several positive initiatives that secured Southfield as an economic hub in southeastern Michigan. Some of his most impressive accomplishments include implementing the first 911 emergency system in Michigan, and one of the first emergency medical services and paramedic programs in the United States in 1972. Mayors for United Negro College Fund, founder of Eight Mile Boulevard Association, and establishment of the Southfield Smart Zone, assisted in the first senior citizen development McDonald Towers and Woodridge Apartments, assisted in the development of the Berg site in 1976, and the creation of the Downtown Development Authority. Negotiated the joint contract between Southfield, Japan, and Lawrence Technological University to build in Southfield the first composite bridge in the United States. Established east-west route for I-696 and its sound walls. Nominated in 2002 as Michiganian of the Year, awarded White House Millennium Community for Southfield in 2000, Diversity Award from the National Black Caucus, Eccentric Newspapers Newsmaker of the Year, Jewish War Veterans Man of the Year, United Negro College Award, Governor of Kentucky Designation Kentucky Colonial, and the Jewish War Veterans Brotherhood Award. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor, and the council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize Donald F. Fracassi for his many years of dedicated service to the city of Southfield and its residents. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and the council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim that the Southfield Municipal Campus shall officially be renamed the Donald F. Fracassi Municipal Campus effective immediately.
Comments?
So before we move on with the presentations, I'd like to give the council an opportunity to speak.
Sure.
Anybody would like to say anything? Yes, go ahead. Councilman Mandelbaum.
I was just going to say, thank you to Don for all your service and everything, for being a partner with me, being a friend to me, helping me through a lot of different and difficult situations. When I was confused about a few things, you helped clear them up for me. You took time to talk to me. Many, many days you stood outside and just talked. You let me come to your home. I just appreciate all the things that you've done for me and for the city of Southfield, and I just want to say thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum.
Mr. Fracassi, you know, we've gone back a few years from the days I was on the Total Living Commission, and then when I was appointed to council, you called me the next day, and we talked for probably a couple hours, giving me the history of Southfield, what your vision was, how to move it forward. Your knowledge of just the Southfield history and things that have been tried and things that were successful or not successful has always, always helped me in some of my decision-making. You have a lot of great insight. I may still be calling on you occasionally, but again, I appreciate your many years of service and everything that you've done for this community. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell.
Mr. Fracassi, Don, I recall you have a wealth of information. When I was council president, I asked you quite a few questions, and I came by your house, and I sat there several hours, and you had documents for every situation. And I think some of those documents, they were very applicable to what we were going through, and I actually implemented some of the things that came out of those documents. You made copies, I made copies, and they were implemented during my term while I was council president. But I really want to thank you for your dedication. I know that you're a man of, that gets things done, and that's what I would like to be at my, when I'm all said and done, I got things done. But I really appreciate it, and the city appreciates you, the council appreciates you, and I think we've indicated our love for you and continued the good work.
Councilman Hoskins.
I remember being, working as a staffer for our state senator, then our state representative, and coming to the council meetings. I came to every council meeting, and I remember the very first council meeting I went to, it was a very contentious meeting, and afterwards, I remember talking to you, Don, and we talked for a good amount of time, and the amount of knowledge that you imparted onto me in just that very short conversation, I mean, it was invaluable. And every meeting after that, and every time we've talked, I've always appreciated everything you've told me, all the knowledge that you've imparted. I mean, you obviously are an institution here, and it's been my pleasure getting to know you, to work with you, and thank you, thank you, thank you so much for your service to this city.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Banks.
Mr. Fracassi, we go back many, many years, and I want to say thank you for your love, your dedication to the city of Southfield. I think I first met you when I was 16 years old. You connected me with Tom Froomeyer. We helped move McDonald Tower House and paint the Berg site, and I really believe my beginning began because of you. When you, one year, hosted a government day program at Southfield High School, we all ran for office. At that time, I remember, I ran for mayor. You sent me an agenda packet at my house. I job shadowed you the whole day, and I sat up here next to you. And at that time, I thought, I think I want a position in government one day. So you've done so many wonderful things for our city. You've taught me so many things between you and Mr. Flannery, just too many to mention, but thank you. I think the naming of this campus could not go to a more deserving individual, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Nancy.
Now, before you speak, Don, I know you have some words to say.
I just have a few words.
I know, I know. We've got a few more presentations. Just a mayor.
I'm on a time clock. Mike was said, if you're not through in five minutes, you'll throw me out of here.
It's okay, it's okay. We'll get you a chance to speak.
Don, we also go back a long, long way, and you, I can't think of another person who knows more about this city. You helped me write the 50th Anniversary Book. You sat with me as I was going to assume this office, and gave me advice from your years of experience, and although we've not always agreed on everything, we certainly have had great discussions and point of view, and I always appreciated all you know. And many times, especially with newer council people, they don't realize why something happened the way it happened, or, oh, I remember that there was a drain over here, and of course, Don has the institutional knowledge. And always, you come out with those moments that are really very helpful. So I have the pleasure of presenting to you a plaque, and I will read it, presented to Donald F. Fracassi, and great appreciation for 50 years of dedicated service to the city of Southfield, city councilman 1967 to 73, mayor 1973 to 2001, and city councilman from 2003 to 2019. Congratulations, Don. Does anybody's name deserve to be on this bill? It's Donald Fracassi.
All right, darling.
She's the one that put up with me all these years. After, I don't think I've got much to say. I just have just a few things that I'd like to mention. First, before I begin, Mr. Iron Frasier, my buddy over here, Sam Iron, City Treasurer. The thing that I have to impress on everybody is that all of you know how much time you spend in the city's work, and you leave families at home, children need breakfast, right, Tanya? And they have to get to school. And so my family has suffered every time for 50 years. You know, we're only 62 years old, the city, and of those years, I've been either councilman or mayor for 50. And I have before me, I have my brother over here, and I guess my friends and my relatives and search people here, and I appreciate you so much for coming to this beautiful occasion, as they might say. And it's a, I have to mention, I promised her, Emma is down in Florida and couldn't be here. I promised I'd mention her. I just have lived in Southfield for most of my life, and you all know the love I have for her. Southfield is 62 years old. For the 50 years I have walked through these doors of these chambers and have attended hundreds and hundreds of meetings, right? Nancy was a clerk, and she kind of grew up in Southfield also. I've met and worked with so many wonderful people, including presidents, vice presidents, senators, congressmen, who helped us bring this exciting city alive, and we were known all over the country. When you walked down the hallway, you knew Southfield was there. People who always made my job easier and always made me look good. I'd like to start by naming them, but the list would be too long and endless, but I'd like to say thanks to all the team of people that worked with me, staff people, and all those that came forward to make me look good. My secretary, Sue Silver, is not here, and Rebecca Lazarus is in the back with her two babies, and she helped out when I lost a secretary. And together, and Mayor knows, we had a time in '72 that we were diversifying the community. We were having many, many meetings. I think Michael was involved in the group that started looking at what we could do to make sure that we have a diverse community, that everybody would be respected, that all our people would be taken care of, no matter what they are, where they come from, and that's the kind of city we had. Before that, we became the All-America City. We're only the 12 cities in the country that were awarded that banner that you usually see up behind the pictures. I would remember, of course, this night, almost the rest of my life, I hope it's longer, that I will cherish 50 years of memories and all the love of the city, the city of Southfield, and what made it the center of it all. And I want to thank council. I really cherish this evening, what you have done. Tonight is something I've never believed would ever happen. I never was one to look at awards and hats on the back. Just get your job done and do it right. And that's the way I kind of ran my office when I was mayor. And the council, when you go back to the Durbins and the Perrinoffs, and I used to sit here where Hoskins is, if I said something wrong, you know, I'd get a couple of whacks on the knee, because Perrinoff would kick me or the Durbin would, one or the other, say, "Don't say anything until you know what you're talking about." And I kept talking, though. So anyway, Mr. Fred and Ms. Hawkins, city clerk, and attorney, and everybody who's made this possible, I want to thank you very much. I never would guess in the entire world that this would happen to me. And again, I'd like to thank all my family. I know that I do have a big one.
Can all of Mr. Fracassi's family stand, please?
Yeah.
Do you all stand up?
That's half the audience.
All right. Thank you so much for coming this evening. And Don, before you step down, we have one final presentation. Last but not least, Senator Jeremy Moss would like to share something with you.
Well, I listened to you talk about how you got some whacks on the knees. I've been a recipient of a few Don Fracassi whacks on the knees.
I shouldn't have sat next to me.
Well, that's true. But, you know, especially looking through the pictures, as everybody has been doing, it is so clear that the name Fracassi is synonymous with Southfield, and the amount that you have given back to your hometown doesn't just compare with the amount of any other Southfielder giving back to this city. But I can't imagine anybody in this country who has given back to their hometown the way that you have to our beloved city here. And so, you know, I'm a recipient of many Fracassi bits of advice. You know, I was the youngest one up here when I served, and you were the youngest one up here when you served, and you gave me a lot of, you know, trial by fire of how to survive in this fast-paced city environment, for which I'm truly appreciative. And so we have a tribute to you here on behalf of the state of Michigan, signed by myself, signed by State Representative Kyra Bolden, and signed by Governor Whitmer, to recognize your decades of service, of selflessness to the city of Southfield and to the state of Michigan, and how much it means to all of us who call Southfield home. So I just wanted to present this to you as well.
Thank you, pal. For our very first time, all of us councilpeople have the great news. Then we went to a conference, and neighbors and community members came to see us come.
He can still fit it!
This tool is about 50 years old. Boston did to it, and it still fits.
Yeah.
But anyways, I thought I'd bring it because it's such a memento that, I don't know, I've had it all these years. So, but anyways.
It's still fashionable, too.
Yeah. You know, we went to the conferences, and every councilman went to another meeting, and we'd meet in a room, we'd go over everything that we seen, what we knew ideas, knew this and that, we made sure that we brought it back. I and I had done a lot of that, going through the conferences and you're having and talking to people who could have helped the city. And we've got what a lot of people's, I'd say, word, I don't know if that's the word I want, I just know that they all seen us come, and they were willing to help us, and it was really remarkable. When they seen this jacket with this tag on it, and even Jeanne McDonald, her first woman councilwoman, she wore one also. And we made a statement. So to all of you, thank you so very, very, very much. I cherish it all my life. To everybody here that is sharing this evening with me, my family, Fred, and everybody that's here, chiefs, where's the other chief? Oh, there he is, standing up. This is our new chief, please. And our fire chief, who makes sure that his emergency vehicle is in the house. Thank you very much for being here. I think I would have voted for the little ladder truck. Thanks so very, very much, everybody.
Thank you, Steve. We do have light refreshments out in the corridor, if anyone would like. We'll take a 10-minute recess, cake and punch.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Mandelbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for Donald F. Fracassi.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum that we approve the resolution for Donald F. Fracassi, and supported by Councilman Brightwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. We have two more presentations. Fire Chief.
Hey, how you doing? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. As I said before, as a presentation to celebrate Fire Ops 101, back in October 2nd, earlier this year, and early October of last, of last, the year before, we had Councilman Brightwell, Councilman Mandelbaum, Councilman Tanya Morris, and Director Finance, Director Austin Michaels, all participated in Fire Ops 101. So Fire Ops 101 is an opportunity for elected and appointed officials, lawmakers and decision-makers of every city, to have a day in the life to be a firefighter. This is put on by the Oakway Chiefs, which represent the cities of Bloomfield Township, Farmington Hills, Ferndale, Madison Heights, Rochester Hills, Corsa, Southfield, Waterford, and West Bloomfield, as well as the local unions. The local unions put up the money to actually purchase these lovely helmets over here that will soon be given to our council members. So while they're there, you can see the pictures, is it's a full day of being a firefighter. They get to participate and have hands-on on an actually live-fire training, search-and-rescue, vehicle extrication, hazmat scenarios, and they get to do CPR in the back of a EMS truck while it's moving, as well as trying to put on a self-contained breathing apparatus, as well as donning this 45-to-50-pound gear. So the weather conditions weren't very good those days that they were there, but I'm happy to tell you that your elected officials came out with a smile on their face, they were eager, they were energized, and it was a great day. Putting out live-fire, cutting up cars, doing CPR, they were a very, they were a great sport. I think what was best about the day was, is that they got to experience and deal with other public officials. They got to talk to other fire chiefs, other firefighters. You know, it was definitely a win-win occasion, and I want to personally thank you for coming out, and the rest of the Oakway Chiefs, thank you. So if you could please come down, I could present you with your helmets.
Okay.
As you can see, they've been customized to Southfield way. I just want to, I can feel quick words, but for new council and so forth, October 6th is the date this year, so we'd love to have you, love to get you to come out, and we'll have a great time.
Chief, I just want to say that, and let the audience know, that I've spent one year and a half at the fire department, one day. This is a tough job. It's really, it was insightful, and I
I really appreciated, it was hard, and, you know, it did give me a new appreciation for the level of difficulty and the courage and the strength that firemen have to have. But I was really also excited to actually see and touch and feel the equipment that we had approved. What was, that's the name?
The Lucas.
The Lucas, yes. The Lucas, the life-saving CPR equipment. So, thank you again, and I encourage our new council persons to participate as well next year.
Thank you, Chief. I thought that it was going to be a different experience. It was a great learning experience, going into a building that's 300 degrees with air tanks going and everything. It was definitely an experience. I also thought, you know, I'm in shape, I work out, can't be that hard. But when you say, oh, go clean up the hoses and put them on top of the fire truck, it's a little bit more difficult wearing all that gear, getting to the top of those rigs. They're a lot taller than you realize, even that first step up. But I would like to share with the council and the audience that while we were going through it, we were split into different groups, and we had firefighters from many different areas, all the chiefs were there. And the one thing that everyone said was, "Southfield has one of the best fire departments. They have great training." And they said that our fire chief is at almost every class trying to recruit new firefighters. And they showed, they said the dedication that he gives to his fire department and his teams are, is unmatched by anyone else. So, thank you very much.[642.11][642.11](applause)
Next, we will have a presentation of the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award to Rosemary Allen.
And I'd like to bring up Veronica Leonard, the Chair of the Southfield Total Living Commission. And Ms. Allen.
Are you ready?
Yes.[667.35][667.35](laughing)
For both Ms. Leonard and I, this is an extreme pleasure. Rosemary Allen, who I've known many, many years, she was a PTA mom at Eisenhower School, PTA mom at Levy Middle School, PTA mom at Southfield High School, Brace Letterly. She was also very active in the area council PTA. And Rosemary was always somebody that you could go to and you knew she'd be there, she'd make sure it got done, and was always very instrumental in inspiring others. You can do this, join me, it's going to be fun. Really, she is, just this personality of hers, you could never put it under a bushel basket. It's, this woman is, will not be contained. So, besides my long history with her in the Southfield Public Schools, and by the way, I forgot the year, but she won the Nancy Widman Award from the area council PTA, the top PTA mom award that's awarded. So, it should be no surprise then that Rosemary Allen is the 2019 nominee for the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award. And she has a long history of giving back to the Southfield community besides not just the schools. She's served on the Parks and Recreation Board since 2002 and is currently the chairperson. She has been the president of the Tamarack Hiawatha Neighborhood Association since 2000. She has been a member of the Southfield Emergency Management Crew, the CERT, our CERT team since 2014. While, if that wasn't enough for her, she also served on the Detroit CERT team since 2013. She's currently a member of the Southfield Historical Society, the Martin Luther King Task Force, the League of Women Voters, the Southfield Lutheran Dem Club, the Southfield Community Coalition, the Southfield Community Anti-Drug Coalition, the Southfield Police Citizens Advisory Board, and a graduate of the Southfield Police Academy. I'm sure I left out a couple of things.
That's okay.[826.13][826.13](laughing)
She also, oh, here we go. She also serves as a police chaplain for the Southfield Police Department and has been named Chaplain of the Year this year, on November 22nd. This is your year.
It is indeed. Hallelujah.
And she will serve, and if that's not enough, while she, her children are all now 30 years old.
Yeah, they are.
She had them when she was very young. She's going back to volunteer in the schools for the 2020 Milage Campaign. And she is the recipient of my, the mayor's Extra Mile Award in 2018, and the Dr. Martin Luther King Community Service Award, the Spirit of Detroit Award, Hometown Hero Award, Smooth Jazz Award, and the Nancy Widman Award. Whew.[882.13][882.13](laughing) I don't know when she, where's the address? Where is, there he is. Is she ever home?[892.31][892.31](laughing) This is the husband that lets her go and do all these things in the community.[899.31][899.31](applause) You know, also, I have one other story. Rosemary, in her spare time, she walks her neighborhood, she makes sure that everything is going well. And one day, she was out and she heard these screams, these screams, these screams. And she was the first to the rescue, an ATT lineman had fallen off a pole and ended up having broken ribs and back, and one thing after another. And it was Rosemary's quick action that got 9/11 and our fire department on the scene. So, something, this aura is following you, you know?
Yes.
So, Rosemary, on behalf of the Total Living Commission and the City Council and myself, presented to Rosemary D. Allen for dedicated service to the city of Southfield the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award 2019.
Thank you, Steve.[966.23][966.23](applause)
All right. You can say a few words.
Rosemary, before you speak, I just also want to say there's another acknowledgement of your achievements by Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence. There's an honorary proclamation. I'm going to ask the mayor to hand that to you.
Oh, wow.
It's in the interest of time.[986.73][986.73](applause)
Well, thank you, everyone. The Total Living Commission, the mayor, the council, and everyone who had anything to do with this, I am deeply humbled by this award. I'm honored as well. I never do what I do for, really for recognition. I do it because it actually comes from my heart. It's an innate ability that God has given me for people. And the only thing that I want is that my record is kept on high. But I tell you something, it's good when you can be recognized on earth, when you can get your flowers while you live. And so, I just want to just say how grateful I am and how thankful I am for the city. When the mayor was reading all of that, I'm thinking, my goodness, I couldn't believe all of that. But I actually have done it, and I remember every single incident. And I'm just honored beyond words, and I'm just so grateful, and I thank you all so much for what you've done for me.[1054.23][1054.23](laughing) And of course, I thank my family, too, because I know it's a lot of hours that I'm out. I thank my family. My children are here, my granddaughter is here, my husband, and I just thank you. Thank you, Southfield.
We don't like to shake your hand.
Oh, yes, well, I want to shake yours, too, so here I come.[1075.13][1075.13](laughing) (applause)
We have three reappointments this evening. Councilman Mandelbaum.
Good evening, Council. We, the Boards and Commissions has three reappointments for this evening. The first is a reappointment to the Board of Review, Mr. Larry Snyder. We have a Fire and Police Retirement System Board, a reappointment of Audrey Harvey. And the reappointment to the Historic Designation Advisory Board, Darla Van Hooy. If you want to come on up.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Snyder to the Board of Review, reappoint to the Fire and Retirement System, Ms. Audrey Harvey, reappoint to the Historic Designation Advisory Board, Ms. Darla Van Hooy.
Support.
The motion has been made by Councilman Brightwell and supported by Councilman Hoskins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just need you to raise your right hand for me. Come around. Let's go over there some more. There you go, everybody can see it. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully perform the duties of Fire and Police Retirement System Board, Historic Designation Advisory Board, and Board of Review to the best of my ability.
I do.
So, Ms. Harvey first. If you sign right there for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll wait to have you sign. Thank you. You can go around and shake it. It's time right there for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you.
I'm sorry, November 25th. What did I say?
Yes, 8th.
Support November 25th.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilman Brightwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved. Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of consent agenda items A through B.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilman Hoskins that we approve the consent agenda items A through B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have five public hearings tonight. Shelley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Honorable Board. Tonight we have a request from Donor Partners LLC to seek a tax abatement at their current location, which is at 25800 and 25900 Northwestern Highway. We're looking, they're looking to stay at their current location, 25900 Northwestern Highway, but we will be requesting two public hearings. One to establish the Industrial Development District around both properties, and then the second public hearing is to place their request in the district. We have a very short presentation tonight, and the CFO, COO for Donor, Naveen Passi, is here to offer the presentation.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll just give a quick overview of Donor, who we are, what we do, and so Donor is an 81-year-old company started in Detroit. We've been headquartered in Southfield since the 1970s and have been in our current location since 1987. We also have offices in downtown Detroit, Los Angeles, Norwalk, and Pittsburgh. So what do we do? Donor is an advertising agency. We've made some of the most iconic advertising that's out there over the years, and as the world has shifted to more social media and digital, we've made that shift with it, and that requires, you know, we're a talent-based business, so we have to make sure we can always recruit and retain the best talent as part of that. We have national and local clients. Locally, we do much of the advertising for Fiat Chrysler and the associated brands, as well as McDonald's, Hungry Howies, and Beaumont Hospital, and an array of other clients nationally. And within Southfield, we have a large production hub, and I think this is important to know because we bring on a daily basis, weekly basis, clients from all over the country, other creatives from all over the country who come here to use our production facilities in Southfield, along with 45 full-time staff that's here. Those people are obviously coming in, spending money, staying at hotels, and eating out on a daily basis in the city of Southfield. Okay? And as I mentioned, we're a talent-centric business. There are 300 of our 400 people are located here in Southfield, and we've seen, you know, Detroit competing for this type of talent quite a bit. Companies like Microsoft and Google, which have moved down there from a tech and media perspective, Cambly Wald and U M., which are other creative and media agencies that are now in Detroit. It's a pull for our talent who also want to be potentially in Detroit, and so that's something that we have to balance as, you know, as part of our company. We've established a small office in Detroit, as I've said, but I think we can work a nice balance between staying in Southfield, keeping our headquarters here, and using Detroit very strategically as we need it for client meetings and other things, but keeping the base here in Southfield. So if we remain here, we've got 30 jobs in our plan for next year that would be added into the agency in Southfield. We'd be undergoing a $4 to $5 million renovation in the building here, which is just down the street, and then on an ongoing basis, have a capital of investment of a million and a million and a half dollars. And to point out, the city would continue to collect $300,000 annually in real property taxes for the complex that is under review.
I would just like to add that Donor has been a wonderful partner for the Southfield Public Schools and for Lawrence Tech. They bring on talent to assist as interns. They've opened their doors to students on a regular basis to come in and see what it's like to work in the different fields, and so we really appreciate their efforts and working with us.
Okay, thank you so much. So this is a public hearing?
Yeah, so the first public hearing again would be to establish the district at 25800 and 25900 Northwestern Highway.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this issue, please come to the mic. Give your name.
Pamela Jarrow, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Why do we have to keep establishing a district for a specific business that wants this Economic Development Initiative tax abatement? Why don't you just establish the area and not just the individual business? That's my first question. The second question is, and I saw he put up there in his presentation, how many of those people that you have currently working for you are Southfield residents? And how many of them did you get through Workforce, which is the Oakland County Southfield Initiative that would, it's like a job center. I want to know how many people you got through there. The second question, and he alluded to it, or Shelley alluded to it, about the collaboration with Lawrence Tech and Southfield Schools, that's a great thing, but what is your, what is the community benefit for the city giving you a tax abatement? How many events have you sponsored in the city of Southfield? How many events have you sponsored for African-Americans in the city of Southfield? Since the city is predominantly African-American, how many events have you sponsored for all of the other cultures in our city? We just cannot keep giving these tax abatements away for individual businesses when they're already here. Unless I'm forgetting something, the tax abatements were used for businesses that needed that to survive, to do something big, to stay in business. We can't just use it as a marketing tool just because someone is here to put something on Shelley's roster to come and speak about. I mean, we need to stop this, and if you're not going to be a good corporate citizen and give back and let the residents see some kind of community benefit, I don't think we need to give it. But I know you guys still use your rubber stamps. I don't know about the two new ones yet, but I guess you can go ahead and say it's approved while I'm here. Make it easy for me. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone else would like to speak, please come up to the mic.
Keith Harris, All Rights and Life Matter, P.O. Box 2769, ZIP Code 48037. I agree with Ms. Jarrow, but we're working on some things now to make school taxes unabatingable. Our businesses should not be given from K to 12, tax abatements for our public schools. Now, if the city can do without the tax money, that's one thing. The county can do without it, that's another thing, if the state can do without it, but our schools cannot do without the taxes. Black kids need these taxes in Southfield. We do have a ragly public school system, and our school system's been ripped off from everybody, from the city manager to the mayor and everybody, and while Terry's selling the city, let these people know that school taxes are unabatingable. We need books. We need fresh drinking water. Our kids are not getting drinking water in our school. Your average child should have 12 to 16 ounces of clean drinking water. That is not happening in a Southfield public school. They don't get a drink of water to lunch. These businesses must pay their fair share. They must pay their fair share. Enough is enough.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else? If there's no one else, the public hearing is closed. Shelley, would you like to address some of the concerns?
Certainly. I just want to remind City Council that at one point, we did attempt to make the entire, or thought about making the entire city an Industrial Development District. It would have been very cumbersome, as we would have had to contact every single property owner. This way, we have been including larger areas as we move along, so as somebody who occupies one office building, we've made the entire complex a district to help streamline the process. The City Council should also remember that the city had established a base in 2012 that the state of Michigan is only going to give us a certain amount of funds back from the personal property taxes that are received from our community, and any dollars in addition to that are not going to be coming back to the city. So we do use this as a tool to attract business or to retain business that are considering relocating to other communities. The school system is held harmless. There is zero negative effect for the schools, so they will receive all the taxes that they would receive. The state makes sure that there's no negative impact on the schools. So this is, again, a tool. We are competing against the communities that surround us. There's a big attraction to have people relocate down to the city of Detroit or to our neighboring communities, and so we want to make every effort to make the city of Southfield the best option for businesses.
And there was other question about the community benefit?
There was a question also about utilizing Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield. Donor has met with our staff over the many years, and we've offered services to help attract businesses, or employees to the company. They've worked with them on other workforce initiatives throughout the year, and so when needed, when they're looking to hire their additional people, they will use our services. They're free to all the businesses.
Yeah, and it was a specific question about community benefit, and I saw that you were eager to address that, so.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate the question. So we have been involved in the community quite extensively here, working with the Southfield Public Schools, doing talent tours to give students more exposure to advertising as a potential career path. That, and many of the people that are in our business find that to be a very compelling way to give back because they want to make sure students understand that there are opportunities in advertising, and we've made a big push over the past few years on diversity and inclusion initiatives around that, both to retain and attract minority candidates to the building and as well as making sure that we are paying equitable for equal work, and we've had multiple initiatives around that. We have fostered a relationship with Lawrence Tech to recruit interns, have been part of the Southfield Public School Career Roundtable, sponsored the Southfield Community Cup, where we partnered with the Thompson K-8 International Academy as part of that, and as Shelley mentioned, are engaged in talks to use Oakland County Michigan Works as part of a job recruiting platform. So those are just the few things I wanted to address. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions?
Oh, no. Nothing further.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of the property owners of the Makavi Center for the establishment of an Industrial Development District.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilman Brightwell that we approve the request for the Economic Development Initiative at 25800 Northwestern Highway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
And then the next public hearing would be for the application of Donor Partners LLC for the personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328 for 25900 Northwestern Highway.
This is a public hearing.
Again, Pamela Jarrow, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. Lot of economic buzzwords. The specific question was community benefit, so let me ask it a different way. You've been here since 1987. What community events have you sponsored? Take out the schools, take out Lawrence Tech. What other community events have you sponsored? That's what I want to know. I want to know what have we gotten from your company? And what are we going to get with this tax abatement? So if you could be specific, not beat around the bush, and just say, this is what we've sponsored. And if you have not sponsored anything, why don't you consider sponsoring some events to promote greater inclusion and diversity in this city? Like a Juneteenth event, or a neighborhood party like we used to do in the city of Southfield right around the time your company came. Every ethnicity group had an opportunity to have their night so that all of us could come to see what the food was like, learn something about the culture. That's where I'm going with this. So are you that committed for the money that you're asking the residents to give you via the city? That's what I want to know specifically. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Yes, please come to the mic. Give your name, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Darryl B. Joyce, 1871 Hilton Drive. I'm a Southfield School Board, Public School Board trustee, and I'm up here to say that, and defend Southfield Public Schools because I just heard someone misinform you guys about not having clean water. That is not true. Southfield Public School has clean water. We have had collaboration and partnership with Donor, so I'm not sure where that information came from, but I just felt like I had to come up here, and I just had to come up here and defend Southfield Public Schools because we have a very good school system, working very hard to make sure it's one of the best in Oakland County, so we don't have a shabby school system, and that's why I'm standing here to say that is not true. So whoever came up here and said that, they're truly misinformed, and they need to start coming to our meetings, and they need to understand where we're coming from and get better knowledge because they are misinformed. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. This is a public hearing. Just keep your name, you have three minutes.
I'm okay, Terry. Yes. Thank you. Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. I have two nieces that are in the advertisement. One's graduating from Eastern University. That's not Lawrence Tech, nor is that Southfield Public Schools. I have another one graduating from School of Creative Arts. That's not neither one of these, but both live here. So from what I just heard, are they excluded? Are they also possible to get jobs at Donor? Because they are both in that field, and this is what their degrees are in. Is it just exclusively if you went to Lawrence Tech? Or can they also be shadow, going to find out about jobs in this industry as well? I don't want them to be excluded because they didn't go to one of these two places. I wanted the opportunity to be open to everybody and have an opportunity if you are a resident of Southfield. But if you fit within the mold of what they are asking for, because I believe any corporation anywhere, you can apply for a job, and it doesn't have to be specifically this. And so back to what Pam was saying, you know, is it open generally for everybody, for all? And if we're going to keep giving tax rebates, why not make it every five years, we give all businesses tax rebates? Then we can just cut through the chase, every five years, they get a tax rebate, and just raise our property taxes.
It's a public hearing. Would anybody else like to speak? If seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Sir, I didn't get your name from Donor.
Naveen Passi. Naveen Passi.
Naveen, would you like to address any of the issues that were just raised?
Sure. So we have participated locally in the Southfield Community Cup, the Oakland County Michigan Works program, just in this past year, and have participated in other programs prior to that. In terms of the question about, do you have to be at Lawrence Tech or locally to be recruited? The answer to that is no. We recruit from all over the country and would welcome the opportunity to work with students and graduates that have moved back to Southfield.
Can I just make a comment regarding the sponsorships? The city of Southfield is trying to fill up our office buildings, and by retaining and bringing in new businesses into the community, they're offering jobs to our community, to the residents, and helping to strengthen the neighborhoods by having people shop and do business in our area. We do not have any quid pro quo requirements, asking people to sponsor anything when we offer them tax abatements. Our goal is to help them stay in our city, and many of the businesses that I work with are very active with a lot of our boards and commissions, and they get involved in the community, and that comes naturally out of working with us. So we don't have any requirements that anyone make any donations to any organizations in the city at all. That's not part of it. The company will sign a document stating that if they're to vacate their property before the end of their agreement, that they'll reimburse the city for the taxes that we abated, and that's the agreement that we make with the companies.
Counsel? Any questions or comments? Councilman Melman-Banks?
Thank you. If someone is interested in seeing what jobs your company does have available, is there a website that they could go to?
Yes, Donor, D-O-N-E-R dot com. Under the Careers page, there are listings for all current openings, and they're welcome to submit a resume, even if it doesn't fit one of the openings, and our HR team reviews that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve IODB Economic Development Initiative applicable for Donor Partners for Personal Property Tax Exemption under Public Act 328 of 1988 as amended at 25900 Northwestern Highway.
1998.
Public Act 328 of 1998.
Support.
Motion has been made by Councilman Brightwell and supported by Councilman Mandelbaum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Item C. Mr. Crowe?
Good evening. Our, the first public hearing from the Planning Department is BZRODD 19-001, a zoning request of AFJona Development on behalf of the owner, the city of Southfield, to amend the Northland Subarea Redevelopment Plan Overlay Development District, which is shown up here on the board, to allow for development of commercial buildings on properties located along Greenfield Road in Proposed Subparcell Number Two. So it's the, it's the frontage here on Greenfield, consistent with the master plan that was originally adopted in 2017. Again, the, there are two public hearings. We're going to make a presentation on both, but we'll have separate public hearings on each of them. The first one, where the northern unit is 4.18 acres, it's within the current Lifestyle District of Northland Overlay Development, and the public hearing here is to consider amending the existing- the existing overlay development to allow for this proposed commercial development. It's the old Montgomery Ward Tire Center, for those who are familiar. These are existing conditions. The site and the buildings are currently vacant. That's looking at the former Tire Center from Greenfield Road, looking east. The property has the current Overlay Development District. And I'm going to invite representatives of AF Jonah to talk a little bit about the specifics of the project. And then Mr. Alisevus will come up from the DDA. And then I'll be available to answer any questions after the public hearing's been held.
Good evening, George Etheridge. 17160 St. Mary's, Detroit, Michigan, 48235. Again, before your honorable body this evening is the request of AF Jonah Development and Management, which is a 40-year-old company, family-owned, dealing primarily in commercial as well as residential development. As indicated, the master plan was amended in 2017 to allow for the Overlay Development District for the Northland Mall redevelopment area. Here are some of the current holdings of AF Jonah Management as it relates to the commercial retail and the manner in which it is anticipated to come to the Greenfield frontage. Again, currently at 12 Mile and Southfield Road, we have a number of retail outlets. Again, this is the type of development which is being anticipated, which was contemplated with the master plan, again, as adopted in 2017. We all are familiar with the Southfield, the history behind the Northland site, particularly with it being the first open-air mall of its nature, established here in the United States. I will not belabor the point by going through the history, given the hour of the evening. Here's an overview of the subject property. Again, primarily focusing on the Greenfield frontage. This public hearing is specifically for Unit Two. However, our presentation will cover both Units Two and Three, which is the subject matter of your second public hearing. As indicated by the Planning Director, here are some of the same images reflecting the current conditions of the Northland Shopping Center, view of the former Hudson's Building, as well as the Water Tower. Again, the iconic Greenfield entrance of the Northland Center, which will be retained as a part of this proposed redevelopment. There are approximately five units. Again, the subject of this public hearing is Unit Two, which is approximately 4.2 acres. As indicated by, again, the Planning Director, the existing conditions of the subject property, this being the previous Tire Center, as well as the previous J.C. Penney Site, again, views from Greenfield Road. What is anticipated for Unit Two, which is considered Phase One, again, is a 4.18, approximately 4.2 acre site. Two proposed buildings, the first of which is 28,000 square feet for a fitness club. Secondly, 15,048 square feet for retail building, inclusive of 224 parking spaces. Unit Two, a future phase would consist of a proposed 3,200-square-foot bank with a drive-through facility. Again, as I have indicated, the second public hearing would consist of Unit Three. If it pleases your honorable body, I'll just briefly do an overview of that subject property. Again, Unit Three would be a future phase consisting of a 4.5-acre site with four future buildings, ranging in size from 6,000 square feet to 14,000 square feet, inclusive of 247 parking spaces. Here are a few renderings for, just for your edification and for the viewing public. Again, showing the improved landscaping and walkability of the Greenfield frontage of the Northland site. Here is a rendering of the proposed elevations, showing the primary materials being brick, steel, glass, and ethos for the facade of the properties. And again, here's an overview and aerial of the proposed points of ingress and egress off of Greenfield into the shopping complex. Prior to, or rather, after your study session of last week, there was one question which was raised as relates to an easement, which exists along Greenfield Road. Given the setback of the property, which is 120 feet from the right-of-way, I bet easement would not be encroached upon.
If I could, I just want to jump in for a minute. We are considering the development of the proposed retail, but also all of the streetscape elements along Greenfield would be built during Phase One. So the sidewalk's going to be widened from five feet to eight foot wide. The urban plazas, the pedestrian plazas, the art, and all of the screening elements will be developed under Phase One along Greenfield, which will set the tone for the entire one-and-a-half-mile perimeter of Northland Mall, the former Northland Mall site.
Thank you. There are some additional renderings, just for your review. Again, showing the widened sidewalks, the increased landscaping, the tree canopy along the public right-of-way. Again, showing the screening of the proposed parking area from Greenfield, again, shielding the vehicular traffic from any light trespass which may exist as relates to vehicles parking there during the evening hours. And again, just a general site plan overview of the subject's sites for Phase One.
I'd like to also invite Mr. Alisevus, the DDA Director, to make a few comments before we open our public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel members. Alisevus, Director of the DDA, 18,000 West Nine Mile. I'm here also this evening as a member of the Task Force in the Northland Committee. I'm not sure if you recognize that the end of this month represents four months, four years, I should say, that the city has taken control of the property. At our last DDA Board meeting, the end of November, we presented this particular deal to our members, and they voted unanimously to recommend this project to move forward this evening before you. As you know, over the course of the last four years, we have put in a lot of time, a lot of investment. It's been a very fluid project. We think now that this is actually an excellent opportunity to begin the redevelopment of Northland that everybody has wanted over so many years. We've been very fortunate that a very reputable developer has come forward, has placed his faith in the city, not only in this project, but in other projects that he's done here. He's had representative projects throughout southeast Michigan, in particular, the 13-mile Woodward piece near Beaumont. And we are working diligently with him to make sure that this project, not only is satisfactory to him, but also to the city. We continue to work with them on a bi-weekly basis to make sure that all of the issues are handled in a proper manner. I may also remind the council that they have not closed on the property as of yet. They're still going through part of their due diligence. If everything moves according to timeframe, we expect that this particular piece of property, along with Unit Three, which you will hear shortly, will be closing at the end of January. And hopefully, construction will begin shortly thereafter. So the DDA is in favor of this project, and we look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. If anyone wants to speak to this issue, please come to the mic, give your name. You have three minutes.
So I guess I can tear this off right here because it clearly says you're supposed to give your name and address.
Give your name and address.
Okay, well, I'm not going to give it since the other person didn't give theirs. I'm going to get right to the point. You know, the city purchased Northland December of 2015 for a mere bargain basement price of $2.4 million. You acquired all of the art. I wish Shelley was still here because I'm going to address her quid pro quo comment, which is quite Trumpian, in a little bit. But, you know, you paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe close to a million, to have a company to come and do this visioning session with the residents to say what we wanted at Northland. I want to know a couple of things because I haven't been here lately due to some family issues and other reasons. If we paid 2.4 million, and we've probably spent maybe 20 million with the environmental stuff, the extra insurance for the environmental, cleaning up the asbestos, how much did we sell this piece of property for? I'm sure it was over 20 million so we could recoup our expenses. If you remember, I said to the city that we should not be in the real estate business. What we should have done is what we thought we were going to do. This was prime property, and everybody across the United States was going to be standing in line, trying to buy Northland. Northland was the oldest regional mall established in 1954. If my memory is correct, so the presentation up there said '52? I think that's incorrect. Am I right, Mr. Administrator? Am I right, Mr. Mayor? That it was '54 instead of '52? Okay, so you might want to get all the facts right in your presentation for a little bit more credibility. But my concern is, are we going to just have a city that consists of strip malls? I mean, I want to see some innovative development, and not just a strip mall with every piece of property. And I wish Fercassi was here. Fercassi used to ask a question, why is it when developers develop property in Southfield that the materials seem to be a little bit cheaper? But when you go to places like Birmingham, West Bloomfield, Sylvan Lake, Orchard Lake, some of the purported affluent places, the quality of the materials are a little bit more upscale and higher-end. I just, I want to know, how much was this property listed for? And how much is it going to be purchased for? And I want to know the exact figure.
Thank you. This is a public hearing? If anyone else would like to speak? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Crowe, would you like to address some?
I'd be, well, I'm not sure it's pertinent to get into specifics because this is only four-and-a-half acres of 114 acres. But I believe that if all of the sales and the purchase agreements go through, the city will be made whole for their investment to date. This first phase is consistent with the Northland master plan that was developed and approved by council. The building materials, the landscaping, the streetscape design is consistent with the Northland Overlay Development Design Guidelines. So this is, both the buildings and the material, as well as the streetscape elements, are all consistent with the plan that's in place. There's just a few modifications on dimensional requirements and so forth. But the fitness center, and the retail, and the bank are all consistent with what's allowed and what's been approved in the past. And the building setbacks are consistent with the current Montgomery Ward Tire Center and have been kept off the road because of existing utilities and easements.
Thank you, counsel.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we approve PZR ODD 19-001.
Support.
Motion has been made by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilman Brightwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And I just want to point out, you do have a recommended resolution in your packet that I would imagine you've made your recommendation on.
Yes.
But one item is that the petitioner will work with the Planning Department and the Assenia Attorney to finalize the amended Northland Overlay Development District Development Agreement, which really puts all of the design elements into a written form that will be adopted and be the guide for the future development of the site.
Did you want us to take an opportunity?
No, it's already in the resolution, but I wanted to make that statement that your approval is inclusive of that.
Item D?
Our next public hearing deals with Parcel Three, PZR ODD 19-002, a rezoning request of AF Jonah Development on behalf of the owner, the city of Southfield, to amend the Northland Subarea Redevelopment Plan Overlay Development District to allow for development of commercial buildings on properties located along Greenfield Road under Proposed Subunit Three. This parcel is approximately 4.5 acres and is just south of the current drive into Northland off of Greenfield. It has a depth of approximately 263 feet and a length of approximately 750 feet. It is currently vacant parking lot that used to service the former J.C. Penney Department Store. It does have the Northland Overlay Development District with two subareas, the Lifestyle and the Shopping District, is underlying zoning. The proposed development includes four potential commercial buildings. As the market will dictate what the specific users are, the council will be adopting the concept master plan for Unit Three. Under Phase One, the site will be cleaned up and turned into green space. However, as I mentioned earlier, all of the streetscape elements along Greenfield will be developed as Phase One of Unit Two, so that we'll have a unified streetscape up and down Greenfield. As the former Tire Center comes down, and new steel starts going up, and there's excitement and activity, the developer is hoping and planning to continue his development all the way south. So we think that the market will drive the interest in continuing development. But in the meantime, the Unit Three will be cleaned up. All the streetscape and infrastructure will be installed during Phase One of Unit Two. And then ultimately, this is the concept development plan ranging from 6,800 square feet up to about 15,000 square feet. And these are the two units, conceptually side-by-side along Greenfield, with a primary access off of Greenfield with landscape median, and two secondary accesses from the north and south of the development. So with that, we'd be happy to have the public hearing opened. And I'll invite the development team up to answer any questions that the council may have.
This is a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to speak, please give your name and address. You have three minutes.
You didn't answer the question. What is this particular piece of property, the 4.1 acres, being sold for? That was my question. And since you said with the sale of it, it would make the city whole, I want you to break down those numbers so that we can all know whether or not the city is whole. You know, we're doing this rezoning request, and you're going over what it is, and you're showing the pictures. Why don't you be specific and say to the residents, currently, it's zoned for this? What is the rezoning request? What are you doing? What did it go from, and what will it go to? You're not really being specific. And showing all these renderings and all of that, it's really cute. But be more specific and say, currently, this is what it's zoned for. They're requesting, they're asking for this rezoning request so that they can do this, which is different from that. That's what you're not doing. And that's what the people want to know. The other question, or the other comment that I want to talk about, you're talking about retaining the Northland sign, which is great, and calling it the Northland Center. But if you recall, we had a downtown police station in that development. So is the petitioner or the city going to ask about replacing our downtown police station and putting a police station in this new state-of-the-art development? The people that live on that side of Southfield do not have a downtown police station. Now, all of you at one point have been concerned about things happening in your neighborhood. What about the people that live on that side of town that's feeling a bit ins- What about the people that live on that side of town that's feeling a bit insecure because they don't have a police station over there? I'm really appalled because you took this new chief and in my mind, you put him in a situation to do what you guys have been trying to do for the last three or four years and that was close that downtown station and you succeeded. And I really don't like it. Now, somebody needs to be talking with Ark and Jonah and asking him about putting a police station in there or taking a little section of it and putting a downtown station over there about the same size. People over there in that community need a station. And be specific. We don't want to see all the fancy pictures. We know it's going to be fancy. Hopefully, it's going to be like Birmingham and Bloomfield, as Fercassi would say. But what are you currently able to do with the zoning now? In the rezoning request, what will you now be able to do that you couldn't do before? That's what we want to know. And I'm asking you to be specific with your questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else?
Al Sevis, 18,000 West Nine Mile Suite 320. Again, at the end of our November timeframe, the DDA Board was presented with this particular request and unanimously they approved recommending it to council this evening. I'd like to address a couple of the questions that were asked here. Since this property is not yet sold, it is not under a, we have not closed on the property, is under a purchase agreement that allows them to do due diligence. It would be inappropriate to talk about any type of sale of price for the property. When the property closes, it will be properly disclosed to you for final approval under the proper public forum. We hope that that will be sometime in early February. With respect to the police station, we have had discussions with Chief Barrett on what his requirements are with respect to square footage as well as what is needed, given that there are both female and male officers. AF Jonah is aware of those discussions. They are participating in them and we think that there will be a fine police station on that particular property. I will agree with the previous speakers saying that we do have a need for that and we are working towards that. So again, we believe that at the appropriate time when those plans are finalized, we will be presenting it to the council in the timeframe that I disclosed previously.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, just through the chair, I'll try to address some of the reasonable questions. The use is not changing from what was previously approved. So it is approved for commercial and office uses along Greenfield Road and those uses are consistent with what's been approved. As I stated earlier, there is some minor changes in the dimensional requirements based on the actual building layout. So there's some slight changes in, we've actually increased the green space along Greenfield. It previously said that you could build parking within five feet of the sidewalk. That is now 12 and a half feet. So the green belt has been expanded. In order to build the 28,000 square foot fitness center, there's just been some slight dimensional requirements that have been amended based on what was the original concept plan that was developed a couple of years ago. Now that we actually have a developer with a market and actual buildings, those are the types of things that have been adjusted. And if you remember, when we developed the overlay development for the entire 114 acres, we had general guidelines as far as building material and streetscape elements. The council has approved specific streetscape elements, so those are being incorporated into the development agreement. So those are really the specific changes along Greenfield Road for these two parcels. And this unit three, again, only represents 4.5 of approximately 115 acres.
Thank you. Counsel?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item D, PZR ODD 19-0002, rezoning requests of AF Jonah Development.
Support.
It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell that we approve the public hearing for PZR ODD 19-0002 rezoning request for AF Jonah Development and seconded by, supported by Councilwoman Banks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for the general public who might be listening in, and the council has looked at the tentative sales agreement and we have spent approximately $12 million on Northland. And if all these sales go through as planned, we will be made whole for all those funds. But it's predicated on the sales going through, but everything now that is preliminary, we will be made whole.
Thank you. Agenda item E, turn.
Our last public hearing tonight is PSLU 19-0008 and there's also companion site plan PSP 19-0008. Petitioner is Mr., Dr. Thomas Menino. Property is located at 23410 West 12 Mile Road. It's on the north side of 12 Mile Road between Telegraph and Bell. It's currently zoned RE, single-family residential. And the special land use request tonight is to allow for the existing barn to be utilized as a small event venue. This property is roughly 223 by 200 feet. Current site is vacant. The former farmhouse was torn down. The barn has been restored. Some former farm and barn elements located outside. As I stated, the zoning is RE, single-family. Master plan is low-density, single-family. Existing drive and frontage along 12 Mile Road. The barn has received substantial rehabilitation. It was falling down, the foundation was in poor shape. The petitioner has added two wing walls that were an open pit basement at the time. One of those wing walls includes two accessible bathrooms. The other one is for storage. Petitioner's taken a lot of passion and time to find specific materials that relate to the history of the city of Southfield as well as the barn and farming in itself. This is some of his labor of love, of work that he's done in the interior. This is one of the banquet tables that's available for meetings, special events. We call it a small event venue. It has a maximum occupancy of 49 people. This is some of the original timberwork that has been restored in the barn. Some of the implements and antiques that he's collected as part of the ambiance of the interior of the building. There is a first floor, but the top part is accessible to be used as a venue. The first floor or the basement area is used for storage and other supplies. These are, again, two barn doors that he's traveled out of state to bring back as well as all the hardware and the site itself. When the council adopted the special event venue or the small event venue, one of our goals was this would probably only be eligible in a couple areas within the city with the eye towards preserving some of our cultural and historical heritage. The existing barn itself, once the farm building or the residence was torn down, then it became an accessory use that's not permitted. This would allow the barn to continue. We want to be sensitive to the green infrastructure and the heritage of the barn. We do not want the entire property to be paved. So the pavement recommendation from the city engineer is just in the driveway entrance. Most of this is permeable stone material so that we don't have a lot of runoff with some access area, additional areas of green space for overflow parking. There are 18 required parking spaces based on the maximum use of the barn. 18 have been provided with two accessible spaces that will be paved and accessible walkway into the building, but the rest of it will remain as a gravel lot. These are some of the elevations of the barn under the restoration, floor plan. And with that, Dr. Menino is here to answer questions after the public hearing, but this gives you a flavor of the work that he's put in in restoring the barn and he can address how we'd like to use it as operated. But we do have about a dozen standards, the hours of operation, no outdoor use, no outdoor storage, and the maximum amount of people, again, is 49.
Public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to speak to this issue, please come to the mic and give your name and address. You can come down in. Have a seat. She's speaking.
Okay. Ready?
Ready.
Okay. I'm familiar with the barn. I heard that it looked really nice on the inside as he shown some pictures. But he answered two of my questions and that was the capacity size and the number of parking spaces. And he said two are paved and accessible. Does that mean that they're for handicap? Does he have designated handicap parking? But here's my concern, and I don't live in Chanticleer. I almost bought a place there, but I can tell you that I lived behind Tale 12 Mall. Back in the eighties, there was a nice fence that was basically like a concrete post and panel type fence. You didn't hear a lot of the noise. You didn't hear a lot of parking stuff. They had the gate where we could go in and out of the gate and we knew it was closed at a certain time. I don't know how the residents feel, but just being a person that lived in that area for 30 years, I'm concerned about for my fellow Southfielders, if this is going to be like a party venue as well as a meeting venue about the noise? Are you going to require that there's some kind of concrete post and panel wall to shield any noise? Did the petitioner reach out to the condominium association and the residents there? There has to be some cohesiveness when a petitioner wants to do something and the city wants to allow it because they think it's great. But what about the people that have to be there every day, all day? What about what they paid for their place and why they moved there? All of that has to be taken in consideration. So before you guys just use your rubber stamp, find out what the people that live in this condominium complex want. And I think you guys should try to work it out with my fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Linda Williams Bowie and I live at 23211 North Chanticleer in the Chanticleer Condominium Association. And I am represent, I'm a new board member as of this past June. So I am representing along with my fellow board member, who can introduce herself as well, and then I'll come back.
My name is Elaine Jackson and I live at 23349 North Chanticleer Drive. And I'm also on the board at Chanticleer and I've been there about five or six years.
Okay.
The first thing, the first thing I'd want to say is that the special use request states that the venue is between Wildbrook and Brooks Lane, but Brooks Lane is not West Chanticleer, which is exactly next door to the barn. So this address is incorrect. Brooks Lane is not even a through street. It's just, and if it is, it isn't on any map, there's maybe five, six houses. There are 92 condominiums in Chanticleer, over 200 adult residents, owners. And we wrote a letter, November 21st, to the city council and if you would allow me to read it, I will do that right now because some of you may not be aware of it, but...
You do have three minutes, so it's already started. Read quickly.
Okay, well, I'll try to just jump around. It was written, we all agreed to it as board members and it was signed by our board president, Fulton Smith. And we write on the, he wrote on the behalf of the board and the 92 co-owners located just east, directly east of the barn. And we wanted to note that we are absolutely opposed to Mr., to the barn at this time. The Chanticleer community sincerely believes that changing the barn zoning to allow for events, parties of any kind of up to 49 people is, and even is that enforceable, will cause serious and unforeseen damage in the properties of Chanticleer. There are 27 condos that are right adjacent to the property. First and foremost, it will lower our property values, we think. And then what about possible loud music, licenses for liquor, various and sundry people frequenting these events? The low fence that you can see as you turn into Chanticleer is only six feet. Somebody could jump over that. There is no parking that will allow for 18 spaces and 49 people unless there are two people in every car. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. And so where are the extra cars going to park? There's nothing on either east or west 12 Mile Road that will allow for parking. And so we're concerned because if you drive west on 12 Mile, the first thing you see, you can see the barn because it's highly elevated, but the first thing you see when you get there is these turn-in one-way parking and a street. They don't know that it's the barn, so it's going to be either a turnaround space through Chanticleer or it's going to be, so I have to stop.
Or it's going to, finish your sentence.
Or it's going to be a parking space because we don't have any parking signs there that say no parking. So we are concerned about this and we thank you. We appreciate, let me just say that we do appreciate the antiquity and the interesting historical significance of this space, but it is really not something that we as the members of Chanticleer community would like to have in our, in our next door to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something to say, ma'am?
Okay, the only additional thing that I was concerned with were the safety issues in regards to when they're traveling west and east on 12 Mile. When they turn in, the turnaround spot in regards to whether or not they will slow down because we have a hard time actually making turns into our own complex because of how fast they're going down 12 Mile. There's no light there. So we need to look at that in regards to safety issues. And besides that, when they do the parking, who's going to monitor that? Who's going to pay for someone to be out there to say, okay, well, you don't park in Chanticleer. You're not visiting this place. You're visiting the barn next door. 18 spaces, that's not enough and they're going to come over to our spot. If not turning around, they're going to come and just try and park. We don't have a gate. We shouldn't have to be responsible for putting a gate there to keep people out. We've paid too much money to, that's a retirement place for me. I didn't pay two cents to move here six years ago, to have a barn next to me, to have events. It's just not fair. And they need to look at that from a safety perspective and also from our, what we pay for our homes there.
Thank you.
Oh, the hill. Oh, my God. It's hard enough to see that they fly down 12 Mile. So there is a hill there. There's no light there. So where they can at least consider that, if they, if you all insist on approving this, you really need to look at what the people are saying that live there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, if there be another. Please give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's Gerald Grubie. I live at two-nine-one-one-four Wildbrook. It's approximately a hundred and twenty feet to the northwest of this property. And all the members of the planning committee visited in November when we had a lot of leaves on the trees and nobody could see my house. Now it's, the leaves are gone, and this property is very visible. And what they're proposing is a split rail fence. I don't think that's secure enough to keep people on this property. I think that there should be, since you did tailor the zoning ordinance for this venue, that it should adhere, you people should adhere to at least a proper security fence to keep people on that property and keep them from wandering through the woods. I've had DEA agents knocking on my door because people were down there growing pot. I've had people picnicking on my front lawn. It's an attractive area, and it's going to draw, if not the adults, kids that want to get away from these meetings down under these woods, and I just don't want people roaming around. It's going to expose this area, and it's going to change this area forever. I've lived here for thirty-four years, and now I'm going to have a big light at the top of the hill for the parking that needs to be there, and it's going to change things and not for the better. I admire what he did, I think it's a great idea, I just think it's in the wrong place. So, and I don't really see how he's possibly going to make a go of this, but, and who's going to be there next? So, that's all I have to say.
I'm Darla Van Hoy, two-three-eight-eight-six Beach Road, Southfield, four-eight-zero-three-three. I'm quite active in the Historical Society, and I know that Doc, I've met Dr. Manino. He's a kind, generous, thoughtful person, and I understand the concerns of the neighbors. I, I believe that proper signage will be placed so that any kind of turns either east or westbound would be made, and I'm sure he will address all of the concerns that people have. I'm in favor of this. The property, as many of you have already mentioned, is the site of the home of Joseph Brooks and before him Cornelius Brooks. Harry Brooks was his, was Joseph's son. He was an early aviator, born in nineteen oh-two, met Henry Ford. His father met Henry Ford at the Botswor Inn just down the street, and Harry became interested in aviation, having been born just a year before the first flight at Kitty Hawk. And sadly, he died in a, in a endurance flight down to Melbourne, Florida and back on behalf of Henry Ford and was one of three people who flew the Ford Fliver. The, not really relevant to, to whether or not the barn should receive this special event, although I do believe it does, and the fact that it could bring new types of, of events to the city of Southfield where people would be purchasing gas and food and that kind of thing, just passing through. And I just, I'm in favor of this, this special event proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this a public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
I suggest we have Dr. Manino come up and try to respond to some of the concerns, and then I'd like a few minutes to respond as well before the council starts asking questions.
My name is Thomas Manino, two-five-five-seven-five Rutledge Crossing, Farmington Hills. I appreciate the opportunity, Council, to speak today about the development and the rehabilitation of the Brooks family barn. With regard to many of the questions that also surfaced during the Planning Commission, from the sightlines and the parking issues, many of you have been out to the property. The eighteen parking spots is, is obviously no trouble at all, and the overflow, if there were a potential need, there is quite a bit of property there if that deemed to be necessary. In terms of the, the, the structure being a party barn, which I've heard of before, anybody that's been inside the establishment has seen that there's been quite an extensive amount of detail put into trying to reestablish some of the history and, and save this structure. I, I can never, I could never see this barn being rented or given to somebody as an open invitation. It would never be like a graduation party, it could never be a, a party barn per se where somebody not from my family or from a business wouldn't be at the site. I've had General Motors wanting to film commercials at the property. I've had many people say that from Chanticleer, I've had quite a few people while I'm working pull in, walk through the barn, say that they had a small shower, say that they had another type of function, and they would have loved to have had it on the premises there. The environment is really more of a controlled environment. It's not a commercial establishment in no way, shape, or form is it even similar to many condominiums that have a pool, like a pool with a clubhouse? It's not a, it's not that type of venue. I, I, I could never see an unlimited amount of people. The, the Planning Commission hearing that we had, we tried to address the ravine and its, and its ability to be traversed. Many of you have seen the ravine. I've never been six or seven feet down the ravine without the possibility of falling over. The split rail fence that we discussed, I'm putting even a more beefier type of fence for the security purpose, and it's absolutely outstanding. Everything that's been done has been with the concern of Chanticleer. Ever since I took the property over, their fencing along the north end was completely covered with brush. I spent two weeks taking all the trees down and cleaning all that up. I've repaired the fence before. So I, I have worked, they have even given me an easement to tap the sewer line that goes to the property there. So I have really, first and foremost, have always been concerned about any other needs. With regards to the signage and passing of the property, there, the thing about that issue is there's not even any signage up there right now or lighting. I am certain that working out of the Planning Commission hearing, we stated that I would work with the Planning Commission. Really, there needs to be something with some height to designate the property. I'd like to stay historically with the name of the barn. It was called Edge River Farms back in the eighteen hundreds, and we have discussed with some of those council people, there's a, there's an obsolete telephone pole there, maybe using a flagpole with uplighting that would, there's nothing like that in the area. It would certainly feature the property. But I really believe some of the issues of signage and turning into the proper property will all rectify themselves just by lighting the parking lot and placing a sign. We don't have anything out there right now. I've drawn little to no attention, and I've not lighted the property because I don't really want any attention there right now.
Through the chair. In addition to what Dr. Manino responded, a couple, a couple of things that I wrote down. The reason that Chanticleer wasn't listed, Chanticleer Drive wasn't listed in the public notices because it's a private road. So we gave the specific address, and we gave the two closest public streets on Twelve Mile. With regards to the split rail fence, again, we, we listened to residents of Chanticleer. We discussed all kinds of different types of fencing at, at our preliminary meetings. I think it was the board, board president that said we would rather have the split rail fence that's more in character than, than have something else that's out of character put up. And as Dr. Manino said, he's, he's putting a more substantial split rail fence up. With regards to security, police chief had reached out to me and sent his community police officer, Officer, Crime Prevention Officer Kelly Buckberry went out to the site, and she has some recommendations about interior and exterior security cameras that can help make sure that people don't abuse the site. With regard to the concerns that were raised by the Chanticleer Condominium Association dated November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Spence and myself went through that. I provided a memo which addresses all of the legitimate concerns of the residents. And I'd like to just go through this real quickly if I could. Many of the concerns relate to the visibility of the main driveway into the Brooks Barn site and potential for patrons who might miss the driveway to use Chanticleer Drive as a turnaround. Note that with proper signage and lighting along Twelve Mile Road, there should be a minimum occurrence if at all. Also note that since most people use quite accurate navigation devices to direct them to these types of venues, there should be little doubt where to turn in. Parking limits. The zoning ordinance requires one parking space for every three seats, and since the small event venue is limited by ordinance to a maximum of forty-nine patrons, eighteen parking spaces are required and have been provided for. We did, as I stated, we're trying to keep the site green, so we have the required number of spaces. Should there be some overflow, there's half the site that's still grass and available for some overflow, but we did not want to add more hard surface parking, which would reduce the green space on the site and take away from the natural setting of the barn. In addition, I just mentioned there's some additional lawn space that can be easily onsite management to direct people where to park. Loud, loud music, liquor, et cetera. Note that onsite management will be there to make sure disturbances from music or other nuisances are resolved before they get out of hand. Parties will be catered as there is no kitchen proposed on the site. That said, we would expect liquor licenses would be held by the caterers and not the site. Outdoor activities are not allowed, and parties must take place entirely within the building. By ordinance, the council can regulate hours of operation. We have proposed ten AM to midnight, seven days a week, but you certainly could reduce that Sunday through Thursday, possibly eleven, eleven PM. And there are also current nose, noise ordinances on the books. Fencing, again, there's an existing six-foot-high wood board-on-board fence along the north side of the site which will remain, preventing any cut-through traffic. There's an existing split rail fencing along the east side of the barn, adjacent to Chanticleer. Members of the Chanticleer would, had told us previously they would prefer the split rail to be constructed around the remainder of the site. And let me see, council can put a condition on the special use that should cut-through traffic from Chanticleer become an issue. The petitioner and barn owner will need to install a higher fence. So that, that addresses the concerns that were raised in the original letter from Chanticleer, and we do have all the special use requirements specifically dealing with supervision onsite, no outdoor activities. Security and safety will be provided consistent with the community policing officer, and the hours of operation will be limited.
Counsel, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions, if I may. To the planning director, on the plan it notices that there's, it says a future sidewalk, is that only going to take place if we end up sidewalking the entire Telegraph, Twelve Mile Road, I mean?
Right. If you, there is, there's this piece of sidewalk here. To install the sidewalk would, would really require most of that side berm and those trees to be removed, and then all it would do is get us a few hun, you know, a hundred feet to the driveway. So in rare cases, we have the petitioner show the future sidewalk and make that a requirement if other development takes place. But wherever there's natural environmental issues, we don't want to disturb that, we just require that to be put, put, put on for future installation. And this is Twelve Mile Road, which is a road commission of Oakland County.
And they would be, they would have that, those requirements? Okay. There were a couple other questions raised, and I just wanted to, to address them. You know, I, I had a chance yesterday to go out and tour the property. You know, the concern about people going through the ravine to other neighboring homes. I'm, I'm risky, but that ravine was a little too tricky even for me to try to, to go down. And I was there during the day. At night, I would hate to see what would happen if somebody would, would go down, and I think that the fencing that will be there will also help deter people from doing that. Chanticleer mentioned, you know, could they put up no parking signs on their, in their streets? You know, that's certainly something that they can do. You can petition the City Council to put up no parking signs.
Again, through the chair, that, it's a private road.
Right. Oh, they can do it on themselves.
They can do it on their own.
So they don't need to even come to City Council. But the one thing that I will, I will say, when, when you do that, you have to take in the current residents that live there on that street will not be able to, to park there either. You know, having the small venue of forty-nine people, everything taking place indoors is, it's very similar to, to having a, a party at a clubhouse that belongs, that's a part of a condo or an apartment building. I, I can't see uses getting out of hand, especially when they have onsite ownership that will be there, the, the entire party, it's not going to be, we're not going to, they're not going to give a key to somebody and, and open it up. And I think that's one of the conditions that we're setting, is that there will be somebody from the, the barn, or the Brooks Barn that will be there the entire time. Growing up, I, I lived behind a house of worship, and those parties could, could get loud, could go late into the evening, but when those occurrences happened, they were so infrequent. Most of the time, they were, they were calm, and it only happened really if the party spilled outside. And in this situation, that, the only time that the party spills outside is as people are, are coming and going. They're not allowed to actually congregate outside. So I don't think, my personal feeling is I don't, based on my experience, I don't think that there is going to be any issues with, with noise, with rowdy behavior, and I think that, that this will actually enhance the neighborhood. There, there was some concern about the entrance ways and having people try to find the, the, the barn. I think with, once the property is up and running with the suggestion of a, a flagpole with some lighting, I think the, the owner proposed a special flag, just, you know, almost like a logo for the barn, that will help show people where to go. And there's a couple other things that we can do through the planning department to make sure that the site is easily recognizable and easily found, so people are not using adjacent properties to turn around if they miss it, and hopefully that will, that will go. So that being said, I don't, I, I understand the concerns, and I'm not taking them lightly, but I do think that there are, that it won't be as big of an issue as some of the neighbors believe. Thank you.
Counselwoman Banks?
Thank you. My question to the Condominium Association Board, I don't know if you've gone inside the barn or seen what improvements have been made. If not, I would highly suggest that you do that. And I agree with all the comments that my colleague just stated. To Mr. Manino, the, it says that the hours of operation are limited to ten AM to midnight, seven days a week. Did you, I mean, during the week, should we, like, maybe reduce it to eleven?
I, I made a suggestion that council could consider Sunday through Thursday, limiting it to eleven, but I don't know exactly what, what Dr. Manino's plans are for during the week.
I, I quite honestly thought that the hours were fitting because the twelve o'clock puts you at complete closure, so that, I mean, that's where you were speaking about it in the Planning Commission. And I don't really have any schedule or agenda or, I, I'm more concerned about completing And I don't really have any schedule or agenda, or, I'm more concerned about completing the project at this point.
Correct, okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I definitely appreciate your dedication to your craft, and I came through there during your renovation process, and it's some, it is impressive, and I appreciate that. I want to address the Chanteleer, and this is perhaps through the administrator. They brought the fact of a traffic signal. I would like to have our traffic, you know, someone take a look to see the feasibility of having a traffic signal there. Maybe one is needed, maybe one is not needed. But I do want to address that since it came up through the homeowners association. So we can get that on the block, I mean, get that on the table with respect to whether or not there's a traffic issue there at that entryway to Chanteleer. The other item, and this is just being a forward-looking council person. I've been on council long enough to see that things happen. I want to make sure that, and I trust that things will go well. You will have orderly clientele. But I want to see can we get an incident report on a regular basis from the fire and/or police department about what is going on over there, if anything is happening over there. This is just for precautionary purposes. That is based on, obviously, we have a community that's nearby that's well-preserved, and they presented their case nicely, but I, both of you have cases. But this is one that, if there are things happening over there that warrants too much attention from our public safety people, I want to hear about that immediately. So I would like that be part of the stipulation with respect to whatever is approved here. And also with the process of taking a look at the need for a traffic signal.
I can address the one question that came up last week at the study session, which I was unaware of. If there were things that were occurring that were out of order, I think Terry stated that you could revoke the zoning. If there were, let's say, a series of incidents that were not on the up and up, you could potentially lose that. The other thing about the police, that, is her name Kelly, I'm meeting her Friday. I've set up an appointment with her on Friday.
It's Officer Kelly Buckberry.
Okay.
And she's the one from Crime Prevention that's already gone out to the site and offered to meet with Dr. Manino to talk about security, lighting, and crime prevention issues.
Yeah, I'm aware of Ms. Buckberry, Officer Buckberry. But I just want to make sure proactively council is hearing about this as things are happening. I don't want, all of a sudden, we have a pile of things pop up and then, oh, we got to revoke this now. But I want to, on a periodic basis, you know, a regular basis, that if there are things that are happening there that clearly, if anything is progressively happening, that gets to the stage of revoking your license, that's, you know, the zoning. But I just want to make sure we give periodic reports that indicate if there are anything that's happening over there.
Yeah, and to touch on one other subject, I remember during the planning commission hearings, the review sent a letter stating from all the departments, plumbing, electrical, and there was a traffic consultant that discussed the, with 18 cars. Terry would be better to discuss that.
Yeah, again, the parking was based on the maximum occupancy. This is a road commission of Oakland County roads, so they would have traffic counts. I would be surprised if they would say that this would generate even a blip on there. But they would be the ones that would have to do the analysis of whether or not a traffic light would be required.
It's just only because the homeowners asked about it.
Right.
And we should have an answer for them, even from the county, or if I, I know that this is a county road, so they will be the, we could ask the county to take a look at it. If they deem it not necessary, that's our answer. So, but I want to make sure that we have something for that, for that homeowners association there, but.
And again, with the special land use, there's general and specific requirements that the petitioner needs to meet. Other ways we could revoke it.
But.
I know we don't want to get in that situation.
Yeah, I saw the chief get up, but what I'm saying, I just want to get something periodic. Not all of a sudden, we are at that stage.
Chief, did you want to address?
Elvin Barr, Chief of Police, City of Southfield. So monthly, I sent out a report that was going on with the police department. And as you noticed, I added a category addressing the hotels that we feel that may be problematic. What I'll do is add another line item there, which will be specific, if this body moves forward this project, put a specific item for this particular address and location, and you have a monthly report of any incidents going on at that location.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, I, like many of my colleagues, was able to visit the site and was very impressed with what you're able to do, and I like the vision that you have for this property. My concern was, kind of the first one here, about the visibility of the entryway. I actually had an issue finding the entryway. So I'm just kind of looking for more specifics about, I know we talked about flagpoles and stuff like that. Just what are some of the options for creating more visibility for that?
Well, through the chair, one in particular is making sure that the entranceway is well-lit, so additional lighting. I don't believe there are proper signage as far as the address. So having the address large enough and visible, and then by naming the venue will also help. Once a property is taken off the rolls, it technically loses its address. So all these things will allow people to find it much more easier.
And one more question, as far as the parking, how much additional parking could be there? I know we're concerned about the green space, but if we had to, how much more parking could we add to it?
I think you could easily double the capacity, so you could go from approximately 18 to around 30 without too much effort. And that would require, and I've been to barn weddings where there's usually an attendant out there helping to direct where you park, or if you've gone to a fair or event that passed under the grass, they line them up, you pull in bumper-to-bumper, and they make sure there's adequate space to get back out. Again, the minimum requirement is 18, and so we have to provide at least the 18. But there is certainly enough overflow parking to probably almost go double that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of things. The letter that we just received, have the board members from Chanticleer, have they received this?
No, because we didn't originally receive their letter, so it was given to us after the last week's meeting.
But we can give them a copy of this?
We certainly, yeah, I have extra copies, I can give it to them.
Yeah, I'd like to get them a copy of this before they leave so that they know that we did address many of their concerns that they had presented to us in the letter that they had. I too went to the site and toured with the mayor and Councilman Hoskins. And I do, I want to echo Councilman Brightwell's concern about the traffic study. I want to make sure we had that because I almost missed the entryway. But I wanted to see, is it one car going up, or is it, can you come in and out? Is it a two-car?
Yeah, it's 24 feet wide.
It's 24 feet wide, okay.
The retaining wall makes it look like it's, like an optical illusion.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like an optical, there was originally a 16-foot, two retaining walls there.
It just seemed like it was a real quick, sharp turn, but I just, you know, that's my only concern about that. I am hopeful that the members of the Chanticleer community, because they did not say, they said for now, that they were opposed for now. So I just want to make sure that we keep them abreast of what we're trying to do to adhere to all of the things that they are concerned about. But going back to that turn, I mean, I know we talked about potential signage, the map, the lighting. That's a sharp turn, and I would just hate to see an accident right there.
Well, we use design standards. I don't know if it's exactly up to snuff, but as far as engineering, there's a 30-foot radius turning in that has to be installed and a 20-foot coming out. So Dr. Manino will have to meet this requirement. The driveway per the city engineer will be paved up to two-thirds of the slope. And you can see on the plan that there's 25 feet of clearance, which allows two-way traffic. So there's going to be some improvements, including the lighting.
You, yes, so the thing that you don't see when you go up there, those radiuses that are in there right now, that's not my property. So when I actually, a year ago or two years, you see the curb that's on the east side. The radiuses are not there. That property will be opened up much more from the curb to the right-of-way.
Okay.
That's not in there right now.
Yeah, and he'll have to get a permit from the road commission of Oakland County to install it to their standards.
Oh, okay.
Okay, counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of PSLU 19-0008, special use request of Dr. Thomas Manino for the use of the existing barn as a small event venue located at 23410 West 12 Mile Road with the recommendations from the planning department.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Mandenbaum and supported by Councilman Brightwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
And then just housekeeping, there is PSP 19-0008, which is the site plan review request of Dr. Manino for the use of the existing barn as a small event venue with associated parking and other onsite amenities, a property located at 23410 West 12 Mile Road.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 19-0008, site plan review request of Dr. Thomas Manino.
Support.
Motion had been made by Councilman Mandenbaum and supported by Councilman Hoskins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manino, Dr. Manino. Next we have on the agenda our communications portion.
So I've been asked to read the statement regarding council's rules of procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to do so, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. We will now have our communications section. The first speaker is Mrs. Pamela Gerald.
I haven't been to a couple of council meetings, and I stated earlier for various reasons. But at one of the meetings, I was made aware by a resident that called me that the City of Southfield has decided to do a venture with the AKAs to celebrate Juneteenth in the City of Southfield. I think that's a very good thing. My husband and I, we have a little community committee called the Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, and we've been traveling to different areas that are predominantly African-American, talking about Juneteenth and getting people in that community to want to celebrate the holiday, which is the longest and oldest holiday for African-Americans, and also to educate their children. This year in June, the City of Monroe did it for the first time. We had about, almost 400 people, and now it's going to be a yearly event. But in 2010, I came to the city and asked that we do a Juneteenth celebration, and they turned me down. I went to the Martin Luther King Task Force, and they said that they had already had some kind of educational piece about Juneteenth. But the last celebration that we had was June 19th of 2010, and I was successful to get the Southern Oakland County NAACP and the National Congress of Black Women to celebrate Juneteenth. So if you go to the Oakland Press, June 19th of 2010, you'll see that I organized a very large Juneteenth celebration in the City of Southfield. So I'm very pleased that it's not going to be a day celebration. It's going to be a week-long celebration. I'm just hoping that the kids be included in that as far as the educational piece about Southfield and about Juneteenth and the significance of the holiday. And I want it to be not just the African-American community, but every race of people in the community can celebrate Juneteenth. The Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee is also going to be doing a flag design competition or contest. We're opening this contest up to everyone in southeastern Michigan. And what we're going to ask them to do, and we'll be unveiling it with the appropriate paperwork soon, is that they design a flag that can be used to observe Juneteenth that would have the colors black, red, and green, which are very significant to the African-American holiday and Pan-American, the Caribbean. So we're going to be doing that and talking about it. But I'm very pleased, and it certainly meets my approval, for the city to do a week-long celebration. And hopefully, we can continue to move across the state of Michigan and get other communities to celebrate Juneteenth. I want to wish my Jewish friends a happy Hanukkah and a happy Gelt. I want to wish my Christian people Merry Christmas, and also my African-American people Happy Kwanzaa.
Thank you.
Happy Kwanzaa, thank you.
Thank you. Next we will have Gerald Mullin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, post office box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. A madam chairperson, tonight, I'd like to talk about Section 4.1C. Section 4.1C in the Southfield City Charter. Section 4.1C deals with how and when council elects the council president, and I quote from Section 4.1C. "The council at its second regular meeting in November of each year shall elect a council president," unquote. Last year at this time, I pointed out that this council screwed up by erroneously electing a council president at the first regular meeting in November and not the second regular meeting in November of 2018 in violation of Section 4.1C of the City Charter. And to top it off, this year, 2019, you folks repeated this very same error again. If this council can't do a simple, routine administrative detail mandated by this city charter, that is, hold a legal election for city council president, how then does this council here ever, ever, expect to do something really big? Big and difficult like Northland, and do it correctly? The answer is this, it can't. No way, nada, as this council has demonstrated time and time again. For example, just drive by Northland on any given day, and you'll see what I mean. Or just check out the city swamp, that is, the eight-acre parking lot just across the street from this city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will have Abrianna Pinkett.
Next we will have Abrianna Pinkett. Next we will have Sonia Simpson Gardner. She's not here. Next we will have Macy O'Roez. She's not here. Next we will have Stacy Jackson.
Good evening, Stacy Jackson. 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I am exhausted. This is perhaps the longest council meeting I've ever sat and attended. But I am here today to speak again about Ordinance 1571. I have come to you before to express how I feel as though I have been completely ignored. The concerns of my community have gone unaddressed. But the biggest insult came last month, when I attended a meeting just aside the other wall, where developers stood and asked this council to purchase parcels of land for $5,000 because they were deemed worthless, because they were not connected to city sewer. The worst thing is that the spirit of this city, our mayor, lifted his voice to support that developer. When the developer took to the lectern, his concerns on the reasons why he should purchase this parcel of land for $5,000 was because it was going to be so costly for the city sewer connection. His exact words were, hey, it's gonna be a lot of money. $5,500 for a tap-in, $29,000 for a connection and dig-out. Oh, and by the way, the property sits on a high-water table, so it's gonna be thousands more. I have to tell you, at that very moment, I didn't know if I wanted to rearrange the furniture in that room or do Gomer Pyle and say, surprise, surprise, surprise. Because I've been coming before this council for well over a year stating those exact same things, and I have been getting nothing but refuted left and right that the costs were not that expensive. How in the world can a developer get a parcel of land in the city of Southfield when a vacant lot in this land in this city goes for at least $50,000 for $5,000? That's a 90% discount. And I've come before this council seeking to get residents to get a 90-day extension to get an evaluation, and that was refuted. I am beyond embarrassed by you all. I can disagree with a lot of people. I don't have to share partisanship, religion, gender, orientation, but I've always shared respect for my common man and woman. I am thoroughly disrespected by that. I am disrespected that this council will see to it. I am greatly upset that the mayor would even raise his voice in front of my family to support it. How do you give credence to a developer whose pocketbook is greater than that of the residents? They don't need a discount. They need to pay their fair share.
Next we will have Keith Harris.
All races and lives matter, PO Box 2769, ZIP Code 48037. Like I say all the time, my better half is always right. I've never seen such corruption. And I'm gonna tell you, often, I ask myself, how many Negroes do the mayor own? How many prostitutes do he own? I've often seen black men and women walk up to this podium and sell their souls. And we know they're working for the mayor under the table. We, you know, I've been living in this city 16 years. I will never let my son go to a Southfield public school. And at least 100 other families feel the same way I do 'cause their kids go to the same school my son go to. I've never seen a city so corrupt. One of the reasons I'm gonna miss Don Pakowski, because we may have had our disagreements, but he was honest about calling the mayor out. He said, hey, I'm tired of you, the city manager, and Mandelbaum having secret meetings, not turning over documents to the city council, making decisions without the city council. Here the school selling school property, which ain't their property, to the mayor. It is so much corruption in this city, I cannot believe it. And I don't expect you to do nothing, Jason, because you didn't really get that many black votes. But I expect the rest of you to do something. We are tired. You got to start listening to the residents of this community. You just got 200 senior homeowners pissed off. They're voters. You gotta remember who they are. They're voters. We are not giving up the Beechwood Golf Course for the mayor to overbuild our city. There will be problems. We're not gonna keep backing up for the mayor and the city manager and the neighborhood nonprofit to enrich themselves. Enough is enough from this city council. Enough is enough from this mayor. Everything he touched, he corrupt. And believe me, he gonna try to put his face and name on Juneteenth, and I ain't gonna let it happen. Not the days my people were freed on. We got too many black faces in hot places to speak on that day. But we are going to stand our ground. I tell you, we're voters. You better fix the corruption in this city.
Next we will have Bruce Williams.
You said Louis Williams?
Bruce Williams.
Bruce Williams.
Bruce Williams? Not here. Next we will have Louis Williams.
Good evening. Louis Williams. I'm standing again to express my opposition to any plan or thought of selling any part of the Northland property to a medical, to a marijuana grow business, whether it's medical marijuana or otherwise. As I stated before, my concern is the negativity that this would bring into our community. There's a concern about possible increase in crime with this type of business in our community. There's a concern about property values being negatively impacted if we bring that in. We don't want any negativity brought into our community. Nothing that will possibly increase crime, cause property values to decrease. If there's a possibility of that by bringing the business in, we should avoid that at all cost. I understand that, another concern is that, I understand it's easy to get a fake medical marijuana card. And, again, bringing this in would likely increase marijuana use. We all know that many employers, as a part of their hiring process, have a drug test that they give. And many times, potential employees don't even get to the interview phase. They flunk the drug test. So we don't wanna make marijuana use more prevalent, and certainly not in our community. I understand the city council is not granting any recreational marijuana permits in the city. And I strongly agree with that. And again, I urge that you not allow any type of marijuana businesses in our community, medical or recreational. Again, we don't need that negativity in our city. And I would urge the city council to consider that very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will have Mr. Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, 17001 New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 2485697189. First, the reason why I can speak for the black community in Southfield, I'm not saying I'm the only one, but the reason why I can is because I'm not owned by homosexuals, or Holocaust liars, or the animal rights activists, or the immigrants, or anybody. The only people I answer to are black people. That's it. Now, I'm not the only, obviously not the only one who decides what I speak here. There's, I would say, a council of elders. Now, the city of Southfield has, for the past 10 years, been waging a race war, well, at least from my personal experience, 10 years of race war against the black community in Southfield. And my experience, which leads to me saying, the black community denounces the city attorney. She has spent 10 years attacking black people and terrorizing them and making our lives miserable, not for the benefit of black people, but for the benefit of the homosexual, Holocaust liar, Mr. Charlie, Miss Anne, Becky, Brad, Melissa, Amy, anybody but black people. And she took a paycheck to do it, which makes her a sellout. She's an enemy of the black community. And so, the black community denounces the city attorney. What I wanna talk about is that you have all these other groups out here using black people's history for their own personal come-up. That's gonna end. You are now having a debt. City of Southfield will now use black people's history for your personal come-up. That means you aren't gonna use Juneteenth or slavery. You're not gonna, I don't even wanna hear you compare your plight to black people. Say, oh, being us is just like sl-, I don't wanna hear that garbage. Because if I hear it, I'm gonna find out who you are, and I'm gonna put the word out in the black community that you are an enemy, and I will denounce you. The black community will denounce you. We will see you as an enemy of black people in Southfield. Like, you have this individual with these black Greeks. I've always despised black Greeks because they exclude the black community. I mean, they never do anything good. They were created as a way to exploit the black community and use my people's history. I don't care if they call themselves black. They don't consider themselves a part of the black community. That's why they came up with the concept of the black Greek. Greek, what does Greek have to do with black people? And yet they go around using my people's history for their own personal come-up. We, the black community's not gonna tolerate that. Black community in Southfield. And it's not just in Southfield. The people all across the country, black people all across the country, getting sick of these black Greeks using our history for their own personal come-up 'cause they don't do anything good. We've had mass incarceration in Southfield for a long time, and they've never said anything. You have black people can't get, you have the black clerk get attacked. The black clerk got attacked. They didn't say nothing. And yet they gonna sit up here and use my people's history for their personal advantage. And they gonna include the homosexual. That's outrageous. The black clerk is up here getting railroaded by Becky, Melissa, and Amy, and they don't say anything. Do they show any support? Do they come to her aid? Do they try to defend her? No, they don't do anything. All they try to do is try to escape their blackness. They wanna be post-racial. They wanna be racists. Fine. Don't ever use the black community's history, heritage, cultural legacy at all in anything you do. You just talk about black Greek stuff. I don't wanna ever hear you talking about my people's history. The other thing I wanna talk about is Northland. I was reading an article that said that Northland was-
Mr. Rhodes, your time is up. Thank you. Next we will have Mona Lisa Kelly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mona Lisa Kelly, 24692 Casper Court, Southfield, 48033. I came to you before today since 5:30 PM. And I've wanted to seek your assistance. We have, on October 1st, we had a sewer backup. I've been a resident of Southfield since December 27th, 1999. I moved back June 14th, 2019. Autumn Ridge Condominiums. Went downstairs. Water was there. Left early. There were people that were there. I call Roto-Rooter. This is our homeowner association president, because I don't speak for someone else. But I was told that it was the city's fault and to file a claim, and that it would be taken care of, that they would take care of the cleanup. I trusted that, and I believed that. I submitted my information. And today, the independent adjuster Gloria Winfrey said that the claim had been denied. Although I'm just, no, I shouldn't, excuse me, not just, I am an educator, school counselor. Without me, there would be none of us. But I was told, Henry Gordon, who was a public work supervisor, said that it was the city's fault and that it would be taken care of. I trusted that. I've been a resident since 99. My brother purchased his home in Southfield in 1975, so I believe that. I moved away for five and a half months, retired, dropped the mic, came back, and purchased a home. I'm seeking your assistance. I know that there's governmental immunity for municipalities, but I'm seeking your assistance with respect to a resolution, because she said the burden of proof would be on me. Right. I cannot, that's not my field of expertise. And I can't even begin to figure out, how am I going to find, I don't even know who comes in. The first person I thought of was an engineer. So I've come before you to just assist us. There were two buildings, 14 and 15, that were affected. I had a lot of damage. I hadn't even unpacked yet. And another property owner had a lot of damage. So I would like someone to work with us. And this is the third occurrence of sewage backup in our community.
Do you have any information that you can hand to the clerk and she can coordinate with the city administrator?
Okay, I have a letter that I received today because I called her. I also have copies of communication, as well as Janet Felton has copies of communication that I could forward to email you. I thought I would be able to show it, but I'm not tech savvy, so I couldn't pull anything up.
Do you have something you can give to the clerk?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Let me take a picture of it. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you. Next we will have Mr. Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, Southfield residence. As we were talking earlier about the barn and putting a traffic light on 12 Mile, I drive a stick shift. So at a certain point, when you're coming up and down that hill, if you put a light there, and I'm on the downward arc, especially like in the wintertime, there's gonna be snow and ice, and I'm gonna just free-slide down that hill. So I consider that as a hazard, putting that light up there. Leaving it as it is, I have no problem with gliding down the hill 'cause I don't even touch my gas pedal, because the weight will pull me down automatically. But if you put that there, and it clicks at the wrong time, I'm gonna become a safety hazard. And more than likely, because I got a truck, I'm gonna slide sideways, which means I'm gonna be in two or three lanes. But if that light's not there, I don't have a problem. So as you take everything in consideration as to what you are doing, please take that in consideration, that everybody doesn't have an automatic. They still do stick shifts. They still do stick shifts. And trucks going down that road would also have the same problem, and they would have a load coming down that hill, which would push them forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Mr. Darryl Joyce.
Appreciate you making the exception because I didn't sign anything. I'm Darryl B. Joyce. My address is 18711 Hilton Drive, and I'm here to defend Southfield Public Schools. And if I have to come every single meeting you guys have to defend Southfield Public Schools, I'm going to do that because the information that's being put out is wrong. Okay? I've been a resident for 31 years. I have five children that graduate from Southfield Public Schools. They're engineers, they're communicators, and they're professionals in the medical field. I have a number six child that's getting ready to graduate this year coming up. So there's a lot of success with Southfield Public Schools. And I have to defend them because it's nowhere in the world, if I even had another child or I sent him somewhere else into another district, it would have to be Southfield because I have seen the success from our Southfield Public School district. So I don't know where the information's coming from. I'm not sure who's spreading all these lies, but it's not true. And so I will be here at the next meeting you have if I have to, no, not that, I will, to defend Southfield Public Schools because we have a very good school system here in Southfield. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings our communications portion of the agenda to a close. Council, do you have communications? Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that as the winter season comes, to please be careful on the streets. Sunday had a very light coating of snow, yet as I left my home, there were several of Southfield's finest, both police and fire, helping with overturned vehicles, multiple car accidents. These were both on residential streets and on major thoroughfares. So please drive carefully. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, for whatever holiday you celebrate or don't, but enjoy the season. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell.
I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, a happy, safe holiday season. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. I also would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday season, and since this is the last meeting of the city council for this year, I'd also like to wish you a safe and happy new year, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Councilman Husken.
And I do want to wish everyone a very safe and happy holidays and a happy new year.
I just want to echo what everybody else said. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and we look forward to everyone having a safe and blessed new year, and we'll see you in 2020. And so, Mayor, are you next?
Before you, I have a travel report that I'm looking for your-
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expense report for Kensington J. Seiver, who attended the National Eagle Cities November 19th through November 23, 2019.
Support. Motion has been made by Councilman Brightwell and supported by Councilwoman Banks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Travel expense has been approved.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to give a summary of the big rake this year. It concluded week before last. We had 102 yards that we were able to help our elderly and handicap residents with. We lost the day because of the big snow in November. Nonetheless- We had-
Nonetheless, we had 180 volunteers show up. Lawrence Tech led the number of volunteers, once again, the men's baseball team, men and women's tennis teams, men's lacrosse team, men and women's soccer team, and the cross-country team. We had also corporate volunteers from Dir, Transwestern, Southfield Public Schools, Southfield Regional Academic Campus, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, Southfield Parks and Garden Club, and particularly want to thank residents that come every week, every year, Robert Johncox and Robert Walton. And of course, making the rake possible is the donations of leaf bags from Great Lakes Ace Hardware on Greenfield Road north of 12 Mile, Southfield Home Depot, and Southfield Lowes. I know I heard from a number of residents that were very, very grateful for this assistance. And happy holidays to everyone.
Administrator?
Yes, I just want to comment on a couple of things. Council president was elected at the second meeting. There was a regularly scheduled meeting, but there were two meetings, and it did happen at the second meeting despite what was said earlier. Regarding the sale of property, yes, property was sold on Civic Center for a reduced price after being on the market for over, over three years. In addition, two homes will be built on that parcel, and yes, the developer at, on his dime, will be paying to connect a city sewer. That was part of the arrangement, two, two new homes being built within 18 months, and they'll be, you know, in the 2,000 square foot range. Council saw those transactions. Regarding marijuana, we've not issued any permits for any type of marijuana. Yes, medical is permissible as a special land use, highly regulated. And when recreational marijuana comes up, we haven't even authorized, you can't, we don't even have an ordinance to support that yet. So that keeps coming up at each meeting, and I want to just say that it's not been approved here yet. We'll look into, get the details on this sewer backup. And finally, I'd like to, you know, on behalf of myself and all of the employees, thank the councils for the holiday season we're about to celebrate. And, you know, we're, it's about hope, peace, joy, love, light, family coming together, and, you know, regardless of your faith, it's a good opportunity to celebrate a lot of those principles. And frankly, hearing the tone of some of the comments tonight, I think the world could use a lot more hope, peace, joy, love, family, and just a little bit more kindness to our common humanity. Some of the rhetoric gets a little disheartening to hear, and, you know, I hear it from my employees, and, you know, let's move and celebrate, you know, what this season's about. We're going to start a new decade. A lot of us were around when we worried about the, what was going to happen in 1999 and local governments, would our toilets flush the right way, would our computers all crash, and we spent a lot of time investing to make sure that we'd still have running water, and we have a lot to be grateful. So let's take stock in that and continue to move forward as a community. Looking forward to outstanding 2020 and another great decade for Southfield. Thank you.
City Attorney?
I have nothing to say too much more than echoing everyone else and wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year, and I look forward to working with you all in 2020.
Thank you. Clerk?
Happy holidays to everyone.
Treasurer?
Happy holidays to everyone again also, and just wanted to let our residents know if anyone was looking to get the tax deduction for their winter taxes or summer taxes that they haven't paid yet. We have a drop box at City Hall, even though City Hall will be closed on December 31st and, and January 1st, but we have the drop box, and anything that's in there, by the time we get here on January 2nd, will be marked as if it was paid by December 31st for our residents. So, and we accept postmarks as well, wishing everyone a happy new year as well, and all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. The planner has left the building. Assessor is not here. Engineer not here. I don't believe we have anything to schedule. No ordinances.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, it's been brought to my attention that the closed session has been postponed this evening.
Oh. Okay. And never mind.
Oh, really? So with that being said, the meeting is adjourned.